It is now 10 o'clock, ladies and gentlemen. I think I'll call the meeting to order. We have the approval of the minutes for -- well, before I go into that, well, you go right ahead. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate as a courtesy, please. We also need the approval of the minutes for January 2nd.
Move it.
Any discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Discussion approval of the claims, are there any?
We're with.
Motion in second, those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, and we've got a couple of adjustments on the agenda for this morning, ladies and gentlemen. The memorandum of transactions has been changed somewhat. We've taken off the other on there because that's no longer necessary under J.D. Pedder cells. Also, number five has been taken off because there's no discussion and will be none on the discussion separation agreement, county head department. Also, on item B, the initiation of hiring, has been also taken off because we've gotten an opinion from the attorney on that particular item so that we need more clarification on that, so that's been also taken off. So we'll move on to just item A on the approval for memorandum of personnel transactions, and that's been handed out and around to the board members. I'm not sure if the public has that out there for your perusal, but we did take off as on the original one, it said others under J.D. Pedder cells, that's been taken off.
Move it.
Target.
Any discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye, I'll pass this round for your signature.
Aye.
No, according to our attorney, all we need to do is accept the personnel memorandum of personnel transaction, and the resignation is accepted automatically with that acceptance.
What I see on the authorization to initiate hiring is only a sheriff's clerk.
Yeah.
Right, but that was the position that was being moved because of the economic development position.
Okay.
That was part of that. Item number six would be the -- well, we won't move on that because that's time set.
We'll go to number four.
Number four, I'm sorry, okay. Discussion of inaction on the health service unspent budget. Dennis, you want to take over on that, please, and talk about that?
Okay, now if I start coughing, I can recover, so if I lose my voice, I will recover. Anyway, what we had, I worked with Patty, Larry, and Jackie here, and what we have, we have funds that when we were budgeting that we did not anticipate having at this point in time. So we do have extra funds here, and I'll go through this a little bit here. Following will be a discussion in detail of the unobligated revenues that have come about during fiscal year 1314 and possible ways in which these unbudgeted revenues could be used. When budget hearings were held in January to March 2000, that should be 2013, the following accrued cash balances and revenues were unknown at that time. First, I'll give you a list of the new revenues that were unbudgeted. We always have an audit every year, and after the audit is done, we know what our exact accrued balance was. That was 908,751. That was not budgeted in this current year budget. The equalization payment was determined after budgets, during the budget hearings in 2000, should be 13. The equalization payment represents the difference between what the state set as per capita average and what the Woodbury County actual per capita rate was. The state set a rate of 47.28 per capita, while the counties per capita was $34.89. Per DHS in Des Moines, the so-called clawback will not occur until the fiscal year 2014-15 equalization payment in which the calculated clawback will be deducted from the October payment. That there is still an imble, but we did get in this fiscal year, $1,272,339. Number three, there was unanticipated revenue classified as state payment program in which the county received unbudgeted revenue, $496,608. And during the fall of 2000, that should be 13, the county sold the home that is located near Climbing Hill. Mental health funds were used to purchase this home for mental health services. That's $195,000, so we have $2,873,410 unbudgeted that's available. Okay, we've come up with the following items to be presented to the full board here to consider. They will involve new budgeted items and setting cash reserves. When we go into this new four region, we're part of a four region, each county is still going to have their own mental health fund. So to have that, you have to have cash reserves. In the case of mental health, 100% of our money comes through taxes, which we don't start collecting until three months after the fiscal year. There's portions that do come in, but the bulk is September and October. So with that said, in order to be fiscally responsible, there needs to be a cash reserve set aside to cover expenses for the first three months of the fiscal year. Budget expenditure for fiscal year 14 totals $4,249,790, so 25% of that would be cash reserve of $1,62,448.
14 or 15?
Budget measures for 15, sorry, 15. I don't know how we got all these years mixed up, it's 15 correct. Number two, it is being suggested to set up a new fund in which the case management expenditures would be paid out of instead of the county health services fund. In so doing this, there would have to be a cash reserve set up to cover the first three months of expenditure that takes two to three months for reimbursements of expenditures. Budgeted case management amounts to $1,140,578. The cash would come from the general supplemental fund, one time only, that'd be 309,392. So what we do here, we levy the benefits out of general supplemental fund, transfer the cash over to the case management fund, and then that will set up our cash reserve that will be a permanent reserve. Case management is pretty much 100% reimbursed. We were thinking about moving county mental health funds over, but you have to do it on a temporary basis and be repaid the same fiscal year. That will not work because this has to be a permanent cash reserve. The next item, number three, the board of supervisors has approved moving the county health services department to the Triview building. There need to be funds set aside for the remodeling and architect fees, that's $400,000. Number four, and if there's any questions, we can come back to them after I go through them. Number four, Sioux Land Mental Health Center and Residential Services need to have funds set aside for increases that will be occurring. They had the right to set their per diem, and we set aside a half a million for that for the current fiscal year. Number five, set funds aside for provider improvements to help improve services provided by various agencies. We set that at $400,000. And then there's going to be a balance of revenues would remain unbudgeted for the time being for a regional project to be determined at a later date. That's the balance, which would be 206,654. Again, these are revenues we do have on hand, but also there could be additional revenues if we don't spend entire budget for this fiscal year. That's still yet to be seen. So are there any questions? And Patty's back here, be more willing, come up and answer any.
Dennis, are we safe with the balance here, or is there any negatives here as far as having to reimburse that money to the state because we do have a balance?
Now, reimburse what money to the state?
Well, just the balance that we have. I know that there was a penalty in the past that if we go over a certain percentage of the balance, then we'd have to reimburse the state.
Because we are not getting any state aid or any state funds, that 10% has gone away.
Okay, so that no longer exists?
We will be reducing the tax asking in the general or the mental health fund or the county health services of 309,000 this year only. That's why I got it in there, 309,000, because we can't levy or can't transfer out of the general or the county health services, we only do it out of General Sup. So for one year, even though we're increasing taxes over General Sup, we're going to reduce it over in county health services. So it's a war.
Okay.
And what I might add too is on item number six, you know, there's a lot of discussion of pooling the money if there's a goal or an overall consensus on how to spend it. So that's really where that money would be delegated to, would be the region.
With the region and reorganization.
Right.
But there's been no really final decision on that by those members of that reorganization as their...
On how to pool money?
Yeah, with their balances and...
No, we haven't, that's because at a later date, then we'll decide collectively on how to spend that money, but it could be and will be something that will come back and benefit Woodbury County because we are the largest per capita, so I look at it, whatever service or whatever new, it might be a new service, maybe crisis feds or something, we would all benefit from that. So we're not at that stage as a region yet to collectively determine that, but that's probably what we...
Where those reserves may go.
Yeah.
Any other counties will put their balances in too?
They will, yeah. Might not be that high, but we are the largest county, and we know that. But the way I look at it is we will also probably be the largest recipient of the services too.
Absolutely, yeah. If we're a big suburban area.
I'm assuming that we will be kept up to date on one and two, and I think three through five should be approved by the board for expenditures.
Absolutely.
Denny, I don't know if you need Patty's help with this or not. Number two, the clawback figure we've got in here, is that what has been received?
Are you on the first page now?
Yes.
Okay, we have actually received the $1,272. They do not have the formula devised yet, they're going through that to figure what the clawback would be, but what we're told down at DHS from Julie, who took Robin Wilson's place, is that the clawback would affect next year's payment in October, but yet they still, and they take it before it gets here. Patty?
Do you want to add stuff? Thanks.
Anyway, my concern is if they come up with the 80% payback because they saved us all this money, is that going to affect that number?
Sure, it's going to be 80% less.
And when would that be due?
It would be due in fiscal year 15.
Right.
15, 16, or 14, 15?
14, 15.
Right, it won't affect this money here. It's kind of maybe you can call a gift. It will affect the next payment, which we really haven't budgeted a whole amount, I don't believe, of the money. Go ahead.
Yeah, we have budgeted this amount.
Oh, yeah, okay. So if they do take that amount back, it's going to have to be back to the board saying what services we're going to cut. If the board so desires to spend all the clawback money, or 20% of the money we're going to get, it's kind of rolling the dice because the legislature's meeting, and they do want to change maybe the per capita and maybe the formula, who knows?
Well, that's been the problem with this whole thing, is we're budgeting and we're not real secure on...
In the budget for 14, 15, we put the equalization fund, not knowing what amount it would be where, we put that in for new services only, so we do not have to start and stop processes, okay? So we have that budgeted for those kind of things with the regional programs, the regional effort would support.
Okay, so what you're basically trying to do is anticipate what the state legislature might do for this coming fiscal year.
Yes, these numbers are for...
Protect the services to the people in the county.
And the other number that is, you know, on the front, when you look through that, the $1,272, I don't know if we're going to get that again. That's going to take prior legislative action, inclusion in government's budget. DHS is not included in their budget. The funds that we've received under the state payment program, that's another one, and we don't know if we're going to get it or not. Now, that affects us directly because we have a large number of people that are very noble, come from other states and count to Sioux City, Woodbury County for services, and then they return. We're not going to get reimbursed for that either.
It's a guessing game, as it has been for the last three to four years.
And neither one of those items, so what it gets back to is the only thing we've budgeted in our 14, 15 fiscal year is our tax dollars that were allowed by law to levy, and we have put in that 1.2, it's supposed to be 1.282, but we're still disputing $10,000. The only given we've got for next year is the property tax base.
The only assurity.
And for that one?
I'm going to have to cut you guys off. We're right at 10:15, and we'll resume this conversation after we get through with the sale of properties. Item six is the public hearing on a sale of piece of property, 078570, at 1010 18th Street. Is there anyone in the audience for or against the sale of this property? This is a public hearing. This is not time for the bidding, sir, we're just, if anyone's...
Move to close hearing.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, we will open it up for bids, is there anyone in the audience to bid on this piece of property? Give your names, please, and the amount.
Maynard Porter, $50,000.
Okay, is there anyone else? Yes, give your name, please, and the amount, your bidding.
Pari DeBala, bid 6, $2,000.
Okay, any other bids? Any other bids? Is there a motion to award this bid to...
Move to accept the high bid.
Okay. What's your last name, Maynard?
Maynard Porter.
Porter, okay, Mr. Porter.
1726, right here.
Okay. Mr. Porter, you've, is, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
What are we, what's this going for? Seven?
I think we posted it for seven. Or it was for five, I think it was.
The minimum on bid?
Just a minute, I have it right here.
Minimum bid was 250.
250.
250.
For $18,000, 366.
Yeah, with the...
Oh, okay.
Right.
All right.
What's the figure?
I don't, I don't, bid was $1,000.
Was a thousand dollars.
Plus a closing.
Okay. Aye.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Maynard, go with her.
All right, Mr. Porter, he's just bought a piece of property.
I have another piece of property.
We have the public hearing again on a parcel that is located at, well, the number is 240975, located at 1509 Burton Street. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against the sale of that piece of property?
Is it a direct sale?
Yes.
It's a direct sale.
Chairman, I move the hearing to be closed.
Okay.
Target.
Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. So this is a direct sale to...
Don Garnett.
Don Garnett for $5,000.
Less recording fees.
Less recording fees.
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Let's go back to item five, and is there any further discussion on that? James, do you have a question?
James in Bruggen, Taxpayers Research Council, 516 Nebraska Street. Under number three, it says the board of supervisors have approved moving the county health services department to the Triview building, and there need to be set aside for funds for remodeling architect fees, and the number listed is $400,000. I know that when that discussion was going on, it was an estimated cost of 250 for construction. I was wondering if you could break down what the remaining dollar amounts are for.
I don't think we can break it down. I think that's just to make sure we've got enough money in there to do the job.
Okay, so you feel confident with that number?
Dennis, Pat, do you have any other information you can present to us on this item? I think we've been pretty thorough with it, and we've had...
We have, we've tried to stay on top of it and continue to provide what's necessary with operations to ensure. If there's opportunity to improve them, that's what our goal is, and that's going to be working together with the region, but unfortunately, there's nothing, you know, that we have to really anchor ourselves until we get additional legislative action clarifying things this year.
Well, I think that we need, from page two, we need a motion, I think particularly on, I don't know if we need a motion on number two to, for the case management to transfer, is that just a mechanical process?
It's already been done, and we will be addressing the 309,000, we go through the general supplemental fund. Okay, we'll raise taxes there, but we're going to reduce them into mental health for one year.
And we've already approved the move for, to the Triview area for the social services department, so we don't need a, we don't need a motion there.
Before you, I forget the dates, shortly, just go off the public bid, and that'll have everything broken up.
Four and five will be coming back to you as individuals. Patty will bring them back to show you where the money's going for you to prove. That's on us.
So really, there's no, there's no item on here that we need to have motions on today because some of these will be future?
Well, I think we need direction to go ahead and proceed with how things are laid out.
Well, I'll take a general motion for that, or a consensus, one of the two. Could I have a motion that we will proceed with the numbered items one through six for the social services to proceed with the, as been presented today? Okay, motion by Mr. Tripp, is there a second?
I'll second it with the understanding that four and five will come back.
Actually, all of them need to come back in some fashion.
Right.
And they will.
Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Did you get a copy of the letter?
Here.
Second page.
Item seven, secondary roads.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have some Hungry Canyon amendments to our construction agreements. Typically, they only give us about 90 days to get these projects going. It's almost been pro forma. We asked for an additional 12 months, which is within that charter, so if we could people the first one, number two, HC 11-1.
Move it. Target. Discussion, those in favor by indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item B?
Only requires the chair's signature, so...
Okay, move it. Is there a second? Authorize Chairman to sign.
Aye.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item C?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item D?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
So what in round figures does that amount to from Hungry Canyons?
I can't remember the total on each of them. They're all either drop inlets or outlet treatments, some cases both, where we're putting the crowded riprav of the outlets. Each of these projects were relatively small. Basically, they're paying for the materials. Our own county staff is doing the work. The range of project value here is from about $5,000 up to about $15,000 on each of the three projects, or four projects. Yeah, Ben's been really successful in getting some of these little projects that we've done in the past for inlet erosion control and outlet scour protection that we're doing with our own staffs now as part of a cover replacement project. One of these is on Story Avenue that we'll be doing next summer with our own staff, and he's been successful lately, even in the reduced funding stream, we've kind of scaled back from some of the big projects. We're getting a lot of these little things funded that are supplementing our maintenance work.
So that's good.
I want to recognize him for the extra work he's been doing and getting these applications prepared for us.
Let's appreciate it.
Definitely.
You need these back? Mark, you need these back right away? Someone else has to sign it?
You're the only one that has to sign, we send it on to Hungry Canyons, and I'll fill out the rest for your title and the date on which this was done.
Is there an effort by the Hungry Canyons group to help the legislature understand the importance of Hungry Canyons money?
Well, we have been. As you know, Hungry Canyons sends a group to Washington DC each year. Last year, Ben was a part of that group that went out there and visited with all of our Iowa congressional delegation. Right now, the Congress is under the no earmarks resolution through the House, and hasn't seen fit to restore funding on it. I can assure you, we'll be talking to the legislature to keep this going again this year because a lot of very good soil conservation projects come out of this program.
Okay, anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
Next thing is the approval of our agreement for 2014 bridge inspections with Calhoun Burns and Associates.
Move it. Target, is there a second? Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yes, go ahead.
Mark, the, is there clarification on that bridge? You do not want to replace it, but you want to bring the road into it?
Help me out with, oh, the Bridge P6.
Yep.
Just for the benefit of the folks out in the crowd, we had a recommendation that Bridge P6, which is on 220th Street, it lies just west of the Mobile Blacktop on 220th. Basically, it serves a single rural residential acreage. It's been posted below six tons for my entire time here. It's down to three tons now. The bridge seats on the east end of the bridge, where the actual crust sits on the piling and support structure are in poor condition. We're proposing at this point in time, rather than replace the bridge, to improve roughly eight tenths of a mile of dirt road that also serves the area. These folks have a posted bridge to the front and a dirt road that's basically impassable during the winter to their back. Right now, our estimate from preliminary, we just did some very quick dirt work on it, utilizing the lightar flights that are available to us now, which saved us a bit on survey and allows to do a very quick turnaround on the project. We're looking about $275,000 to grade that three quarters of a mile road. Bridge replacement is over half a million. Bridge upstream of this structure is a 220-foot-long structure, even 150-foot structure, which we had looked at on the downstream side, we're looking at over a half a million dollar bridge. It's much more cost-effective to go with improving the road, and it also...
That'll be their only way out, Mark.
...give access for the rest of the folks around that area too.
Will that be their only way out?
That will be their only way out then. Right now, the dirt road is a fair weather outlet for them, although I believe they primarily use the bridge when it's available to them. As far as emergency response, once the road is graded in gravel, it should be roughly the same. It's the same distance either going north on the gravel or going east on the gravel across the bridge and then north that same mile, so...
You're going to leave the bridge up at six?
The bridge will come down when the road is graded. It, I beg to keep it open until at least March. I'll be doing the reinspections between now and June. We needed to get into good weather where we could actually begin to look at replacement. We needed to get into good weather where we could actually begin to look at replacement. The blocks upon which the bridge seat sits really aren't that much worse than they've been the last couple of years, but, but they are in, in poor condition. If an overload went over that bridge, it would likely crush those corners. We did look at, at having this repaired. We had three bridge contractors come out and look at it with us. But the way this bridge is put together has two approach spans and a truss in the center. If you jack up that truss span to put new blocks underneath the ends of the truss, there's a high likelihood that the bridge would fall off the abutments on the other end.
Is that right?
It, it's just the way it's put together. It was a risk the contractors weren't willing to take. And if that happened, those folks would be stuck with nothing but a dirt road in that case. So the better bet was to leave it in place, keep it posted, keep it watched as best we can, and then make moves to replace it just as soon as possible.
So you're looking at what, March, April to get the road in?
We're looking at March, April for a letting on it. And what I've done, I think you folks got the, the information that I sent out where we've shifted the projects around. It'll result in a system of nine-month delay on the Bridge XO1 and P260, I believe, one on Grundy Avenue and one on 320th. We basically bumped them into 2015. The grading project for County Road D50, that's that two-mile stretch roughly between where we're, we're coming in south of the Grand Bay Station south of Anthem, that was looked at as a 2015 project. So that one will still stay on time.
Okay, good.
The other two projects are spring lettings, the other two bridges.
So when you say spring letting, you're talking about the dirt road work?
Yes, yeah. Probably April is the most realistic. We've got to acquire some right-of-way and visit with some property owners that hopefully will be amenable to getting the bridge done, or the bridge replaced with the road. It should serve their access for farm use much better. So we're hoping the landowners will work with us on it. Ben's already started to make some contact with those people.
Good, good. Don't anticipate any real issues with the landowners there?
At this point, no, but we've been surprised before.
I know.
I make no guarantees at this point until I see exactly what our, what our right-of-way needs are. Sometimes those take some additional negotiations.
Absolutely.
As we get it closer, we'll keep the board posted.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight, hearing from any, any, any individual or group wishing to make a presentation on item eight on the agenda. Anyone out there? John?
I just want to do, bring the supervisors up to date on a number of issues that'll be flying through planning and zoning. Tomorrow, the Greater Sulan, or the Growth Sulan Task Force will be meeting out at the Security Institute. That meeting will start at 9:30 on housing and then 10, the normal task force meeting. The meeting of the community and neighborhood around the Port Neal Industrial Complex, that meeting's been moved to January 21st pursuant to a request from CF Industries. A mailing has gone out to approximately 250 property owners. We'll be holding that meeting at the Salix Fire Hall the evening of the 21st. We will get a flyer out to each of you, should you care to attend. There's a number of issues that I'll be bringing before the supervisors within the next couple of meetings. The next one will be the construction evaluation resolution that we do every year to participate in the concentrated animal feeding operation permitting by the DNR. We also have to do a couple of appointments, one to the Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission. We've been holding off on that issue because of the gender balance scenario, attempting to get additional female applicants.
Have you had any success?
We keep banging away. It is hard. We've got promises from certain individuals, but the paperwork has not, has yet arrived. So if you're aware of any female potential applicant that you think would, could serve on either of those boards or commissions, we'd appreciate getting that name, and we'll run down that individual.
Well, if you let me know who the, your applicants or your interested parties are, I'd be happy to give a courtesy call to give the information.
Of improvement, we'd appreciate that. The last thing is, we've had discussions with the supervisors regarding a master building permit process, and we will be taking the issue to the zoning commission at their meeting on the 27th to come up with them's recommended language so we can better serve large, general, commercial, and industrial building projects through the permitting process. That'll also take an adjustment to our fee schedule, so you can be in a position to enter into master building permit agreements. We'll probably do the fee schedule by separate resolution, as the fee schedule's not part of the zoning ordinances. Any questions on any of those topics?
Yes, now, the task force meeting tomorrow is going to be at 10 at the institute?
There's two meetings. There's a housing subcommittee meeting at 9:30, which you're also, anyone could, you're welcome to come to. And then it, they'll meet for about 20, 30 minutes, and then the, the full task force will meet at 10. That's in the lower level of the Security Institute.
Okay, all right. I intend on coming to that meeting after our WCIC meeting here. I think we have one.
In the morning.
Or morning at 7:30, Jackie. Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Anything else? Board members, any other items that's not on the agenda? All right, I think we're ready to go into the budget hearing process. What, before we get to the first department, I think I'd like to have Dennis go through the, the scenario of summary of what we're having to deal with in this budget process and what we're going to have to do for these next few days and weeks to get the, the budget done. Dennis, go ahead.
Okay, every year, we start out with a little preface with a budget letter to the Board of Supervisors. This is no exception, so we'll get delved into it here. This memo's purpose is to provide the Board of Supervisors an overall view of the proposed Woodbury County budget for fiscal year 2015. As everybody knows, the economic environment's slowly improving, improving, and the county's cash reserves are in line with county financial policies. As usual, this will be extremely difficult times as there are new factors involved in getting to the end result of a balanced budget. But the county will get through this period without major disruptions in services provided to the citizens of Woodbury County. As the proposed budgets, budget requests return, most departments came in with 0% or less change in their operating requests as requested by the Board of Supervisors. Also, the board requested no new employee or position increases unless revenue was identified to support the request. Requests that came in above 2% will be dealt with. The factors that will weigh in are as follows. There will probably not be any insurance holidays in which the funds could be used to offset tax askings as in the past. In the past, the county's had two health insurance holidays each fiscal year. To give example, the last three months, our health claims totaled over $2 million. Well, at that pace, we'd be in serious trouble, but we had some extreme cases, so should be backing down where we get more in line. Number two, the county has had a poor year in the self liability fund, has several lawsuits adjudicated. Number three, the county is at the tax rate cap in a general basic fund, so with expenditures exceeding revenues by $1,133,760, there will be some hard decisions necessary to balance revenues to expenditures in a general basic fund. As for the General Supplemental Fund, expenditures exceed revenues by $2,384,304. The maximum tax rate in this fund is unlimited. The major increase for the increase in general supplemental is follows. The annual transfer from General Supplemental Fund to the General Basic Fund, which includes employees' benefits, will be $1,109,82. The reason for such a large increase is twofold. There are no health insurance holidays this fiscal year 14, or available cash reserves to offset taxes. And B, there's a one-time benefit levy for the new case management fund, which will generate a cash reserve of 25%, which equals a reserve of $309,392. This increase will be offset by lowering the tax asking in the County Health Services Fund by $309,392 for fiscal year 2015. Number two, emergency management services requesting a new position at $77,473, and also $20,000 for CIP projects at the Climbing Hill facility. Number three, $82,206 for the county share of a system upgrade, a StarCom system. They're planning on spending $350,000 next year to upgrade it. Now, have to be decision, the whole group, whether they want to do it, postpone it for a year, or what they want to do. Number five, the cost of the general election will be held in November 2015. The additional costs are $136,060. This, these costs are mandatory expenses because the county is responsible for general elections and general primaries. Number four, I guess I skipped one, sorry. Number four, a new department called Courthouse Security, which require new funds of $250,000. This department will secure entry to the courthouse through one door similar to the federal building. Number six, I already did five as a general election.
Yes, you did.
An increase of $500,000 self liability fund is required to keep the fund financially sound. This fund not only pays for judgments, but also pays other types of insurance, attorney fees, and all of our workman's comp claims. The Rural Basic Fund is balanced in regards to expenditures equaling revenues. One note here, one note here is that this will be our second year, fiscal year, for the special projects levy for bridge replacements. That tax asking stays at $1,300,000. Also helping keeping the tax asking at its current level for the secondary roads' minimum tax asking is an increase of $300,000 in local option sales tax revenues, which reflects the economy is improving. The debt service fund will remain virtually the same as one capital loan note is paid off, and another capital note will be taken out for 2015 CIP projects. The County Health Services Fund will experience a tax decrease for fiscal year 2015 only. This will not affect the equalization funding from the state legislature, although the state legislature plans on revisiting the equalization funding in its upcoming session. As of July 1st, 2014, Woodbury County will become part of a four-county region as required by the legislative actions. Our investment Woodbury program currently has two loans, which are going fairly well. We had one loan where the building burnt down, and he is rebuilding that to continue on with the business. As the funds are repaid, the payments will go into this fund to generate funds for additional projects. When all is said and done, the Board of Supervisors have to make some very difficult decisions to balance the budget. There will have to be expenditure reductions. There will have to be a hard look at creating new revenues through the cooperation of all elected officials and department heads, and there will have to be prioritizing expenses that are mandated and not mandated. Legislation will have an impact on the county with several legislative actions. One, commercial slash industrial rollbacks, and the funding mechanism to replace the tax revenue lost to the taxing bodies. In this case here, just to preface that a little bit, they've set aside $50 million this year, $100 million next year. I think goes $120 million. After that, we don't know. And each year, it goes down 5%, I think up to 20%. So it could impact us. Another thing that'll impact us, when they redo in 2017, where they take these apartment complexes, move them from commercial to residential. We stand to lose quite a few million on that, but that's in the year of 2017. Number two, the legislature potentially changing the County Health Service Equalization formula. And number three, changes to the tax increment laws. The Board of Supervisors will complete the responsibility of balancing the budget with as minimal of a tax increase as possible, yet provide the function and services to citizens of Woodbury County through the most cost-effective and efficient way possible. Fiscal year 2015 should be a great year, as there will be a tremendous economic growth, tax base increase, and creation of jobs. I'm available for any questions. Or we can delve right into them.
Any questions, concerns from the board on the summary that Dennis just gave?
I do have one question, I guess. Let me see if I can find it. You said the elected officials, we could cooperate and find new revenue?
And department heads.
And department heads. Do you have any ideas of how you do that?
Well, there's a couple of things we have talked about that I don't know where we're currently at. We've talked about the 24/7, and a lot of deals with law enforcement where we could get possible new revenues. 24/7 is a possibility, but the one big one is this suspended license program. It's worked very well in Blackhawk County. It's worked very well in Lynn County. Plymouth County, I assume, I've heard, does have it. Problem is, we're having people from here going up there and filling in for a suspension license program, which I'm not real cognizant of what it is. All I know is generates money. That's something that we need to look at here. It's something we work with the sheriff's office, with the board, and the county attorney's office, but there's potential for a pretty good sum of money. The last estimate I heard, there are 17,000 suspended licenses in Woodbury County. How the program totally works, I don't know, but other counties are using, they're getting quite a sum of money. Yes, it may take one or two employees to do it, or a collection agency, but it's something we need to look at. Because there's, with a 350 cap, we are limited in what we can do. In the budgets, all the raises are included for everybody in the budget. So we have a budget that is truly a real budget. So there's all the contracts negotiated at the deputies', and that's a wage reopener, and that should be done soon.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, let's move on. Sheriff is first on the agenda here for review of your, your, your budgets. And I think that we, yeah, Dennis, I want you right next to me. General supplement, general basic, I mean. You'll look under that tab, page, page 48 and 49, Uniform Patrol.
Well, do I get a minute to speak?
Yes, you do.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to go over a couple of things. You're not all shocked and alarmed, but one of the things that we did earlier in the year in June, we met, I believe, at the Dorothy Pico, and we had a chance to discuss some concerns. And what we'd like to do is, we have met quarterly, or even more often than that, part of strategic planning and to maybe see where our deficiencies are and how we can overcome those and, and try to improve on those items. And we understand this, that all our grants are past the sunset. And we don't see a new dawn there for grants. So we, we have concerns because we purchased items on grants, but now they need to be serviced, or they carry contracts. And so that, that is a concern. We've taken some things to try to alleviate overtime. We went to, on our patrol division, we went to four shifts. And by going to four shifts, we put more people out, what we considered the, the peak hours, the number of calls of service, and also the coverage for the deputies and, and the county coverage for the citizens out in Woodbury County. And by doing that, it saved us in overtime because of that, those calls that maybe come in at the end of the shift, we don't have that anymore because we have staggered hours coming in. And so there's been a tremendous cost savings there.
How many, how many people do you have on those shifts, so it's four shifts?
We have on days, I think there's five.
Five on three shifts, six on one team. There's four teams, there's five on three teams, six on one team. And that affords us the ability to keep two deputies out all the time.
Where are the other three, then?
I think it days off, holidays, and things that are contractually part of what the board and the union have negotiated. Now, you know, so much different. And I, I understand the complexity for it to understand sometimes because it's not Monday through Friday. You know, it's 24/7, and so they have rotating days, and, and then the holidays come into play, or the comp time with they can have, where they have court. They have the option of taking it in pay or in comp time. So then days off become like that. So it becomes very difficult for scheduling. And we thought that by going to the four shifts, it could help us. And ideally, I think down the road, it would be a goal to up that number for coverage on patrol. But we are band-aiding, putting things together as best we can, or, or you know, kind of the old saying, kicking the can down the road. And we've done that too long, but I think we're all understand what Dennis has said, and we got to try to figure out ways to stay within, sometimes it's very difficult.
How many hours per shift? How many do these people? How many do these people work? I mean, did, because you talked about earlier last year, having twelve hour shifts?
Those are for the jail, and we are implementing that. The jailers are going to go to twelve hour shifts effective January twentieth.
Now, that'll cost us more money.
That will cost you, that'll cost you more money, you'll save on overtime. But in the end, it's a wash. It's a matter of this, Mr. Chairman, is, is we wanted to make sure we had the adequate coverage so that we end up not in, in litigation with just the shortage of manpower.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop asking questions because you, you go ahead and make your presentation.
And so, that, but I appreciate that, George, because that is one of the areas that we have made a change. We're going to twelve hour shifts. And in those twelve hour shifts, it will give us adequate coverage when the police department, state patrol, sheriff's office brings somebody in. We still have another number of correctional officers to book that person and process them, yet do all the coverage that's required in the jail. Meals, books, library, meds, and all those other things. So that, that's going to help us there. Yes, there'll be a cost to it, but we looked at, how can we best eliminate some of the issues that we had that were ongoing? And we felt that that was really the best way, and I think Dennis has agreed, we should have the coverage dollars for this year to get us through, through staff shortages and decreases in pay from the higher level down. So we've also gone to restricting where you can go independently, go get your car repaired, saving us some dollars, making sure that people are getting their oil changed, not at a place that charges forty-nine dollars, but within a reasonable amount. And we found some vendors that are willing to do that. So we're using a lot of different areas to try to help with the budget and be really good stewards of the taxpayers' money. So, and then I had just a couple more things, and we'll, we'll move on. Part of our strategic planning is we, we identified, like I said, the concerns of the operational side and deficiencies. And I think that we got to recognize that there's contractual things that are out of our control. The contractual things that the board and the union have negotiated, and that is overtime and the acting sergeants pay, the field training officer pay, shift differential, and our biggest concern is holiday pay that, that needs to be separated from our overtime budget, so that we have a really clear, concise, and you and everybody can see what the overtime dollars are allocated for. Because overtime should be for those things that come up that are unexpected. I believe that in a couple of years, we should budget for the mere fact that we know that presidential candidates will come to Woodbury County, because past has shown that they come. So we could budget for that. That is, that's good budgeting. You say, hey, I know that it's going to cost X amount of dollars. The unforeseen things are when we have a shooting, or when we have a tornado, or any type of major disaster that we cannot, that's, that's what overtime should be utilized for. And that's, and that's why we want to see the separation. And then under the operational equipment side, as I talked, some of those things we purchased on grants, but now they have a shelf life, our tasers, where, where our tasers, no longer will the company cover us. They only have a certain amount of years that they're covered. Our ballistic vests only have a certain amount of time that they cover. That grant has been depleted. Patty has worked on it for us for years, and federal dollars have depleted that. Our computers, we have, everybody has computers in the car, they have air cards, those prices increased on the air card. We cut last year our, our cell phones for everybody. That covered the nine thousand dollars that the air cards would cost, they've now gone up to thirteen. So those are some of the things that contractually go up, that are out of our control. But, so that's a little bit of a quick summary of, of where we're at.
All right, thank you. Well, let's start on page forty-eight. You have that in front of you here?
Yes, sir.
And this is Uniform Patrol. And I have my first item here, which is overtime. Again, we talked about that item ten nineteen, it's, it's, it's gone up to forty-nine thousand dollars. We budgeted forty-one thousand there, and it's gone up, you know, substantially in that, on that particular line item.
And, and that should be that those dollars that we get in from the, the feds, I believe, come into the general fund and don't come into the sheriff's budget. I think.
No, they never have when they come in from the, you're talking about, you're talking about the prisoners, that federal prisoners that we?
No, no, no.
What are you talking about then?
This would be about the dollars that we get from the drug task force, the marshals. They pay, they pay us overtime for our guys to be there. And that in turn goes into the general fund. And it always makes us look as if we're down in the hole, but it's actually money that comes into the county that we utilize. So that's, I think that's the misconception. We're not, we're not using it anymore. It's just that it's not written or, or shows reflective of how the sheriff is getting his dollars.
Well, I don't understand that, Dennis. I do understand that maybe there may be income coming in from that particular source, but it means that if we budget, we have the budget set for this fiscal year, you have forty-one thousand, you've spent twenty-two, five, nineteen, and you're, you're wanting to budget forty-nine, that means that we have to tax for that overtime.
When I, when I did the figures for forty-nine, nine seventy-nine, basically I took the deputies that are in the patrol division and their wages, what it costs us in overtime to keep two deputies out. That's where it comes from. A lot of that, your holiday pay is in there. And with their pay increases, it costs us on holiday about five thousand dollars. I mean, so you're looking at, in a year, that's fifty thousand. Now, that's between uniform and role is where you're going to have that, because deputies fall into those two categories. But that's all that is. I, I guess I didn't really look at it as an increase, that's just what it's going to cost based off of their wages next year.
What, what is?
Well, in that line item, you've only spent twenty-two thousand dollars thus far.
Right.
So halfway through the year, you might assume maybe you could go to forty-five thousand and reduce it by five thousand. And have the same level of overtime.
I already looked at, like, what was spent over the last three years, and then I've taken July until November, which is where, where we were at. So I didn't have the twenty-two, five eight when I did the budget, that's what came up now.
Well, then on twenty-twelve, you spent forty, thirty-one thousand, two hundred. Twenty thirteen is forty thousand, and fourteen, budgeted forty-one thousand, so that's where I'm getting my figures on this.
But that's what you budgeted, that's not what we spent.
Well, it actually spent, actually spent for twenty thirteen was forty thousand, seven hundred and twenty, twenty-two dollars.
Right.
Yep.
Out of that budget.
That line item.
Yeah, Dennis?
Now, we need to, Uniform Patrol, these are all six month totals on our budget forms here.
Yes.
When you get to Uniform Patrol, we were short six people. Was there a lot of overtime paid, which I believe there was, that's probably played in these numbers somewhat? Because in history shows you haven't spent that much in history, but with this year, because you were short, you had all your targets and everything, you had extra overtime over soon to keep, because you were short six people for months. So I'm assuming there had to be some overtime, and some of that overtime probably is embedded in that twenty-two, five there, and your other Uniform Patrols, so these are actually played in numbers here for the current year because of that situation.
To, to a point, I, I, I agree, I guess, we were, had the six deputies in training, and we did have an increase in overtime than what normally we, we would have had in those months in the past, but it wasn't a significant amount. Again, the way I came to that number was looking at the number of deputies that were in there, their wages, and what we've paid in previous months to keep two deputies out.
Well, we're through the holidays, mostly the holiday pay should be, be overtime.
We should have two, let's see, two more.
Two more.
Martin Luther King.
Three more.
One more, one more. Two more is next, yeah.
Two.
So two more.
It's probably not, it's already happened.
Oh, it does come out?
Well.
So you got?
So what, what are we estimating for additional overtime for that then?
I don't know, yeah. I do that.
For the New Year's Day?
For those, for those days that we're talking about?
Those three days, we average about five thousand dollars for overtime, which it really isn't overtime, it's holiday pay.
It's holiday pay.
Yeah. We should separate that out. We've had that discussion before, and I know we have separated out, and I think that's an excellent idea to do that.
Can I, can I piggyback in here?
Sure.
Can you make a motion to actually do that? Because then we can actually see what's holiday pay going to cost us, what's overtime pay really costing us, and then your questions and concerns that you're saying, Mr. Chairman, can easily be addressed because we can see a separation.
Well, I would, I would like to do that, because I wanted to cut at least eight thousand dollars out of this particular line item, because they are not separated, and I don't know what that means.
Can we ask, can we have you?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
And then come back and look at what the overtime costs versus the holiday costs?
Right, right.
I don't know if it requires a motion. I know we've done it before.
Between the?
Directive?
Yeah.
No, you just need to come back and do it, and maybe make it a practice.
I think there's consensus on the board, James, to, to have that done, so that we know what that holiday pay is, and we know what the actual overtime for these areas are.
And I second the reduction, because I know this budget is way over the zero percent operating, and, and we are going to have to make tough decisions. So I second your motion to reduce it by eight thousand.
Are you reducing just the overtime side, or you're reducing?
Just the overtime.
The overtime side.
Whatever's embedded in that.
Okay. Should, should, I, I, I'm all about cutting costs, you know this.
Um, no, I, I think we should get that, but I'm, I'm comfortable just cutting it based on the history of what's been spent the last?
I have to.
So, okay, well, what would that overtime number be then, if you reduce that?
It would be, well?
It would be about, this new number would be about forty-nine, about forty, forty-one, forty-one, some, something.
Forty-one, the same as last year, just holding the line on what it was, I guess.
That's not practical in this sense. You gave a raise of two and a half percent to the deputies, so you have to cost factor that raise into when they work overtime. I mean, that's just, uh?
We haven't addressed the raises yet.
You gave the raises already.
I don't think we've settled on the deputies yet.
Or for the?
Deputies in their previous, not, not what you're going into negotiate, they got a pay raise in January and July.
Right, but that's, we're, we're looking at is July, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Right.
You're, you're in thirteen, fourteen.
Right, but I'm thinking that if, if it has been as it is, you, I'll let you guys decide.
Yeah, we'll see.
You know, basically, we could look at just doubling the six month, which would only give you forty-five thousand, so we're giving you an extra six thousand based on the eight thousand reduction. So there should be plenty of wiggle room in there, I think.
Okay. Any further discussion? What the hell are we doing?
My number did be end up forty-five, I heard that, and I was ready to.
No, it's higher than that, so you throw that out.
The motion is to reduce the overtime line out to like eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
What was eight?
And there is no separation of holiday overtime.
No.
Not at this time.
No, there hasn't been in the past either.
What they, we're going to work towards that, with changing that.
Well, I think that's? Can I, when you say work towards that, are you going to say the, before this budget is finalized and you guys approve, we can electually see a holiday line item?
That's my understanding.
Is that the understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
That they're going to work to separate that line.
Okay.
Dennis, can we do that?
Proceeding budgets.
Okay, well, we'll?
Nothing is, it's that fiscal process.
We will work with the sheriff's department to get those separated out before the budget process is over. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
I think those opposed, same sign.
Steve?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ten fifteen supervisory organized, where did that come from?
I don't have ten sixteen.
Ten sixteen.
Right above.
Where?
There was a doubt on that.
On organized, on, it's?
Organized supervisory.
I got it.
Do you guys have what we look at?
I've got it.
Going from zero to one hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Right, there's no, there's no money spent there, or budgeted there actually.
Now, was that a transfer of some kind? What? Because there's nothing in the detail about what it is. I didn't know whether I missed something or not.
Because sixty-one, seven seventy-one, that looks to me like a spark.
There are continued discussions. That's a half a year ago.
That looks?
That's only for six months.
Half a year.
That sixty-one's only six months, Greg.
Oh, that's right. I, I don't have any idea what that is. Let me make a suggestion.
Well, how about if we take it out and you come back and justify it?
Yeah. I don't, I think.
You could try to tell us.
We're on page fifty. We're skipping ahead one, but just because there are full staffing with a few vacancies, but the shifting people are, we'll fund page set fifty, let's see supervisor going from sixty-eight, seven down to zero, supervisor organized from sixty-three to zero, add those two together, and that's coming back to where they think they moved them, and then upon call.
Okay, let me stop you.
Okay.
You're going line item ten sixteen?
Yep.
And what other line item did you use?
And they're combining and moving on page fifty, line ten oh nine, and ten sixteen. The generals are budgeting this year, each number there, sixty-eight, sixty-three, their budget's zeroed out next year, I think they moved them up here. They're trying to get the people technically in the right office, division.
Pay, pay.
Right, they're paid out of the right line.
Right, so where you work is where that comes from, not?
Okay.
So you're moving investigations into uniform?
Two people, two people.
Right.
All right, for your benefit, and I, I know this is on the second year you've done this.
It's on the first.
First.
We inherited, we inherited the other one. We just showed that.
What you have to do is so that we can follow this, is conservation is a good one to look at. They break it into detail and they give you an explanation.
We had that, we were told that wasn't there.
We did that, we got it back, and I was told that that's not how it was supposed to be.
Submitted.
From who? Okay. Benny?
We'll like pointing fingers.
Why not? I can't figure out who it is, and if you don't. Anyway, it's a justified number, but we don't know that, and we could have saved a lot of time by.
Right, and I'm, I'm, make sure that we do that, because that's what we originally did, and we were told not to, so.
We're just going to let that one ride until you come back?
No, it was explained.
No, it's, are there any vacancies?
In the jail? There's some there. Is this part of the jail?
No, this is, this is.
It's not part of the jail.
If you explain to folks that the, the wages, those items have been verified through the resources and the auditor's office, so those dollars, unless you're talking about a vacancy, those dollars are hard to, when you're talking about overtime, that's different. When you're talking about just the wages, those have been verified, and you can't do anything unless you cut someone or unless there's a vacancy.
Right, we understand that. So is there clarification on that here?
You're cutting eight thousand, but you probably include in there eight thousand plus related, like the night, because that goes down too.
Right, okay. That was on ten sixteen, or was it on?
Ten nineteen.
It was ten nineteen.
Ten nineteen, okay. Are there any other items on this, on this page?
I have a number of them, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Ten twenty-four, deputy acting sergeant, that's gone up.
It's gone up almost six thousand dollars.
And, and again, that's a contractual issue. We don't have a say in it. If a sergeant's not working, that next senior deputy gets paid sergeant's wages.
And so does the sergeant while he's off. So that's how you've negotiated this to be done.
So we don't have, we don't have any control over that, that's done through their payroll.
That is?
It's gone up substantially.
But I think that is, has to do with the pay, pay increases that they receive, that's going to go up, because if a guy's making twenty-one dollars an hour and he gets three dollars an hour more when he's acting, right, when he moves to twenty-five dollars, he's now making twenty-eight.
I would just like to point out, what's your actual for this year, to this point?
The actual is five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Double that, and that's what you get.
Yeah, we budgeted, we were seventy-two hundred, and we spent in twenty-twelve, eight Seventy-two hundred, and we spent in twenty-twelve, eight thousand nine eighteen, and thirteen, nine thousand seven fifty-three.
All right, but the thing is, you've got to make it through the year, or you're going to be shut down.
Well, I don't know how, I, that's where we get into, I don't know how you do that because we don't have any say in that. If there's not a sergeant working, the senior deputy working is paying his wage. So we have no--
All right.
It's contractual. I don't know how to get around it.
This is based on--
You just have to get the money elsewhere, is what I'm saying, out of your budget.
Larry, these are contracts, the board and the union.
And the sheriff.
No, I don't have any say on it. I have some say on language, I don't have any say on--
I do the negotiations.
I know.
The sheriff sits in on those negotiations, has all the input in the world, and you did last year, I believe.
Not on money, you guys sat there and talked money, I don't get to talk money.
Well, it's your, it's your department, it's not mine.
You're the one that holds the purse strings.
That's correct.
So these contracts, the only language that I was asked about in that meeting was if I agreed if they could move around. You and the H R director were deciding on the dollars. I have to live within this contract of dollars that you sign. And if you have, part of their contract is if a sergeant's off, and then there's going to be an acting sergeant, contractually, we are obligated to pay them.
Yeah, and we appreciate that, and we do that too. But what I'm concerned with, guys, is what I see in front of me. And that is, you know, previous years on what's been spent in that area. I mean, I've not seen eleven thousand dollars or whatever spent in those previous years.
Those are wage increases.
And, and it's gone, well, it's actual expenses is what it says to me. It says actual twenty-twelve, eighty-nine, eighteen, actual thirteen, ninety-seven, fifty-three, actual and budgeted seventy-two thousand, and you've spent actual for this year, fifty-seven, fifty-two. So it's gone up--
Because of the contract.
It's a contract.
I mean, we're not, we're not putting more, there's only one person that gets the acting supervisor pay while they're out there. There's, you can't get--
Well, I think that--
Somebody gets that all the time.
Well, I think that we need to probably basically keep an eye on this one. I don't know if it went up two, three percent for the particular positions, or-- but if it did, then those, those figures are right.
This is very simply calculated by the auditor's office, and the sheriff's department has no control.
No.
Okay, so these are actual figures?
Yeah.
Hard rock figures.
This stuff is all stuff that goes into that.
I think listener Mr. Gill, he's probably got an explanation for it.
When we go through the departments, have you look at the auditor's office, the rise of the figures for, based on interaction of the community sources, how many people are in that position, and how much it's going to cost us. So when we send out budgets to departments, any department, we say, don't even pay any attention to that because that's verified, there's nothing. You can, you know, if you want to cut a line item, you have to lay people off in order to cut it.
I know that, Pat. So these actual figures, these actual figures came from your office then? I mean, these are hard figures that were negotiated by--
You can look at other line items to cut there in order to put them in the budget. But as far as personnel items, if you cut--
We know that.
Those are values.
Yeah, we know that, we know that, okay?
Ten twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Those are new.
We've always had field training pay.
Well, where did you pay them?
They're new line items, and they want them separated out. I think they're in overtime.
Right.
Separate them out so we actually know--
It shows--
what these are actually costing them.
Okay, so these were actually separated out.
Did you hear Dennis, that the overtime is where they were before?
I believe they were overtime.
Yes.
Okay.
But that one, that didn't come out of overtime.
Field training pay?
If you separated them out in this budget, why is there not a corresponding reduction in overtime?
Because we're calculating-- Because I calculated, I just took the overtime and calculated out the deputies that are in this patrol, in uniform patrol, and that's how I get each line item.
All right, I understand that, but do you understand what I'm saying? If you took it out of there--
Your logic, your logic is if I, if I took standby pay at a thousand thirty-five dollars, and I took it out of overtime, I should have reduced the overtime by the thousand thirty-five dollars.
Right, logically, that stands to reason.
I did take it out, but when I went back and calculated what overtime is going to be based off of the previous years, I still come to forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I mean, a lot of this stuff, what I looked at in the budget that appeared to me was they were able to reach into these grants when they went over their line items. And we don't have that available to us because those federal grants are gone. Like, well, Biglin was the neighborhood--
Project Safe neighborhood.
Project Safe neighborhood. I mean, there was a, we were able to take a ton of our overtime and not pay it out of the line item and use that grant. If there was a gun involved, if it was a dangerous call, we were able to do that. That grant no longer exists, so we can't go to it.
Okay, well--
The only place we get to go is the overtime. This was always explained in all the work that was done, that we weren't allowed to submit.
Well, I don't, you weren't allowed to submit the explanation?
Didn't want it.
I don't know about that.
Well, that's--
Well, let's go on to the--
Well, let's get it then, yeah.
I agree.
Because what you're looking at, and I don't want to come off as the bad guy here, but if you're looking at a locked-in two percent increase, and you come in with a ten percent increase, you either cut your budget, or we cut your budget.
Right.
And I don't think you want us cutting your budget.
What we're trying to show you is contractually, how you have come to these contracts, and we have to abide--
And I, and we understand it.
Yeah, we understand that.
And then the other thing is, we wanted to make it so it was a clearer picture for everybody. So that when you have holiday pay, it's here, when you have overtime, it's here. And that makes it clear for everybody to see, and that's what, that's what we wanted to do.
Right, and when you do that, if your numbers balance, I don't have a problem with that.
I guess, I guess what I have a hard time with, and it's my first time, is that's different. I can calculate out based off pass calls, and provided we don't have anything crazy happen, that with those deputies in this division that work patrol, it's going to be forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. If I don't put that number down, but that is what we spend next year, then we're open. So I'm just telling you what I'm projecting for that patrol division for next year, that they're going to be using overtime.
All right.
I don't get, I don't benefit if, whether you give me this money or not.
All right, but from my perspective or the board's, instead of forty-nine, that figure would be like fifty-four. Because you'd have to put this other back in there.
It's, it is that, because you, in there you have uniform allowances, you have instructor pay, F D O pay, standby pay, acting sergeants' pay, shift differential pay. We, overtime then covers holiday pay, court time, covering the shift, late calls. That's how you determine it out. When I did it for, I break it down on every, everything that we pay overtime for. And what we generate overtime isn't a lot ourselves, where we say you have to do something. It's court time, it's late calls, it's holiday pay, grants, other types of investments, we have to pay them.
Oh, we know you have to pay them, but, but again, you know, you look at these line items here, and you say you deducted it out of overtime, like field training. Is that taken out of overtime also?
Field training pay?
Field training, yeah, ten twenty-seven.
Right, that's, that's part of the, I believe in the contract, they are, while they are training a deputy, they're given an additional five percent?
Ten.
Ten percent, that's what the county board and the union negotiated. While a person is new, and they're going through field training, they're going to be given a ten percent increase in their pay to supervise that person.
The only concern I have there, though, Dave, is that I don't see any expenditures for the first three previous years.
That's because--
Because they were broken out.
It was never broken out?
No.
So, but it's broken out of now, out of overtime?
That's what we're trying to show, a clearer picture. I think it makes, it'll make more sense to you. I know it's new, it's probably like us looking at some of your stuff, it makes better sense to you, this makes more sense to us.
Well, this makes sense to me too, once I, you know, get an explanation for it.
Well, if you look at Uniform Patrol, and you look at Investigations, Uniform Patrol is a hundred and four thousand over last year, correct?
Yes.
If you look at Investigations, it's a hundred and some thousand under. So it's been transferred from Investigations to this one, and there's not, you know, with the pay increases, probably not bad.
Well, that-- All right, but then you come down to line item, custodial supplies, telephone expense, natural L P gas.
We don't want any, we ask nothing in there.
Where's it coming out?
That's because you eliminated climbing hills.
Correct.
Right.
So we didn't ask for that money to come to us.
But the save, where is the savings? You spent it.
I'm not sure where you at, Larry.
Oh, are you talking about where's that money right now? We still have climbing hill for part of this year. We had a pay, we had to get for Gary, for his coverage out of climbing hill. Next year is when we won't have anything to do with climbing hill. That was done--
You've only spent two thousand dollars in a year, up to this point. And we had budgeted thirty-three, thirty-four thousand.
Where are you at?
I'm still on--
Are you still on forty-eight?
He's down at forty-three oh one. Well, natural.
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty, forty-one, forty, forty-three oh one.
That's page forty-eight.
On page forty-eight.
On the first page, forty-three oh one.
That disappeared in last year's budget.
Right.
Right, we don't, we don't have, we don't, we don't put anything in there.
You didn't put anything in next year, for the current year, there is twenty-nine hundred dollars in there, but that budget was done before, and that money went towards climbing hill. But new department, that twenty-nine hundred, that covers some of the overtime costs for the current year. You can't extra, it was zero there.
Here, yeah.
Right.
I think what Larry's wondering is, where's, does your gas payment come out of now?
We're not at Prairie Hills, or Clime Hill, so we don't--
Shut down.
Right, right.
That comes out of the admin budget.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay.
So it's just the eight thousand--
Just the eight thousand so far, right.
Move to receive.
Second.
Further discussion? Those indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The item, Investigations, page fifty? The items here, I guess I have the same question again on overtime. It's, it's doubled, you know, you've got sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars projected for--
I can explain it, I'm just--
Projected for that, for that particular budget.
In Investigations, we're budgeted thirty thousand, we were budgeted thirty, thirty thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Out of that twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars that you see used, twenty-four thousand of that is used by the task force officers. And that's reimbursed, but we're not getting that back. They're given fifty thousand, between the three of them, they get fifty thousand dollars in overtime a year. So by the budget of thirty thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven, we automatically start about twenty thousand dollars in the hole because they get that. When it's reimbursed, it goes into the general fund, it doesn't come back to offset that overtime budget. Our actual Investigations is only used about two thousand dollars in overtime this year.
Which we don't have a problem where it goes. We're just trying to show you that a clearer picture would be that this is the amount of dollars that, that were funded. Our task force guys, I believe, are roughly eighteen thousand dollars each. There's two of them in there, and there, or somewhere like that. And then the marshals guy gets another amount of overtime.
If we got, if we were able to receive the fifty thousand dollar reimbursement back, we actually cut Invest overtime by six thousand dollars. Because that would put us at eighty thousand seven sixty-seven, and we're not asking for that much. We're only asking for seventy-four, so we're, we're actually cutting six thousand out of Invest. But we want the reimbursement, we need the reimbursement back because those guys are going to get that, and that money has to go to them. We can't take--
And that money comes out of, out of this overtime?
Yes.
Where the task force be?
Yes.
Okay, what we need to do, because they haven't, we haven't budgeted a revenue coming in for that, for next year, we need to set up a revenue line item for task force overtime. So only revenue coming in on specific line items, and then put a note in here, and we'll do a one call F eight, to explain under that line item, that's fifty thousand is revenue coming back. New fund, that's part of that twenty-six.
All right.
But the problem I have here a little bit, over eight years, we've never spent more than thirty-nine thousand out of this department division.
But, yes, because one of the task force officers was actually budgeted, I believe, out of rural basic, is where he was at, and I'm going to be over to Invest. Because that's what they are, they're the taxpayers.
But we don't understand any of that. All we can see is the numbers here. So what you're telling me is rural basic is going to go down by that amount of money?
I don't know where rural basic's at, where I ended up with that, but I don't think there was much--
Well, I don't know, I understand that. How can you move an officer from rural basic to--
Don't we decide where--
We decide that. Because that, because that's, that's paid out of a, out of a different, rural basic taxes, isn't it?
Well, you wouldn't move him out of rural basic, you would replace him.
Replace him, switch the, so his name, a deputy that was coming out of Invest that's on World Patrol would now come out of World Patrol, and the deputy that's in Invest that's in World Patrol is, see, we switch names. Is that a better way to say it?
You have to, you're adding a person, if it's in--
Yeah.
You're adding a person.
He's saying swapping.
Swap, if you swap, then there wouldn't be an increase.
There wouldn't be an increase, it'd be a wash.
There isn't an increase, that's what I'm--
Well, there is, I mean, you're looking at sixty-nine thousand dollars.
By six thousand dollars. But the three guys that are on the task force, they're going to get fifty thousand dollars in overtime, and that has to go to their overtime. I don't--
But where has it come from up till now?
Feds.
The overtime?
Feds paid it.
Feds paid it, so now they are no longer paying it?
No, they're paying it. It just, I don't know how you guys did it. From nineteen ninety-five, when I was in the task force for eight years, I got, I got paid by the county, but they were reimbursed by the Drug Enforcement Administration. Eight years, I don't know--
Well, why are we changing that process, Dennis? I mean, if we're, if we're still doing it that way, then it shouldn't show up as a taxable item here, you know, under this budget. We're taxing for this.
I'm totally confused. I wonder if we can't get some more clarification to see if really something was removed from rural basic to figure out where the revenue, because it looks like it's doubled.
We can't be just getting fifty thousand without having it somewhere.
No.
Well, they're getting fifty thousand, but they don't turn into revenue when we're doing budgeting, it's about fifty thousand. It goes in the total pot. We need to add a line item for this coming year, and then put fifty thousand revenue to offset the overtime there. That hasn't been done. When I go back to rural basic, through rural basic, it looks like a decrease in at least one or two deputies. At least the board approved X number of deputies to be paid out of uniform patrol, out of rural basic. And it looks like it's been decreased, not the board actually authorized a decrease.
And that cannot happen, right.
When you get back to that, you'll see there is a decrease. When you look back on previous years, there is a decrease. So if something's been moved from uniform patrol back to general basic, to trying general basic, a deputy should be moved back to uniform patrol.
That's right, so it's a wash.
Yeah, and then we're short, we're at raised tax in general, rural basic, but we should because it looks like there's been a deputy to move to rural general basic, which causes problems in general basic because we're capped.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't it change the tax structure? We're just collecting.
If the swaps are--
The same?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're saying if it was there before.
Right, like if you--
Just go back to where--
We're still going to levy the taxes.
But it will help in general basic if you take it out of there, because that's where we're running into problems.
Keep the same number of deputies, they can take a task force guy, move back up to their investigations, but then they need to move a uniform patrol deputy back to rural basic to get the number the board approved.
Keep it there.
That would reduce this budget and increase the rural basic.
Rural basic, yeah. But it shows that there in the first place.
Well, if you said it was done, why are we increasing this budget by this amount of money? I mean, it should not reflect an increase of, of over thirty-some thousand dollars here. If we're, if we're paying those people, uh, with funds that are, it should be a wash.
Because you've never, you've never showed, you've never showed those dollars, George.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't have, I mean, we never showed them, but it, if it's, if the actual fact is, is that we were paying them from funds
from another federal source, and then, uh, it shouldn't show up under overtime.
Well, they're, they're getting, they're right in under overtime, then getting reimbursed with the feds.
Okay.
The revenue was never recognized to offset that expenditure.
Okay, okay.
That's why I'm saying we need to add a line item, put in fifty thousand, put in fifty thousand, so we can keep track of overtime here as expenditures, and there should be revenue covered, most of them.
Right, here, and, and the story.
So I'm adding fifty thousand revenue.
I don't, well.
Isn't it removed out of here anyway? It should go back to rural basic? Did I miss something?
No. A deputy should go back to rural basic.
To rural basic.
And now, when we get to rural basic, you know there's a decrease, primitive decrease, over previous years, where they moved a task force person back here, but then slide one back over there, keep the same number the board approved.
All right.
You may approve seven, now maybe five there.
Denny, that money has been accounted for.
What's money?
Fifty thousand that is coming from, to the task force from the feds. That's been accounted for somewhere.
Right.
It's gone in the overall pot.
Right.
All right, if that's where it's gone, for the past over long.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
Yep.
Now we are changing that. You're talking about instead of it going into the general fund, to go into what? The shares?
Shares of overtime, they're covering their costs. That's why it should've been done fast for the last eighteen years, but never did.
All right. And I can, you know, go along with that, but that still doesn't cover the fact that you've got a thirty thousand dollar increase.
Oh, it, it does.
It does.
It's less. You budget thirty thousand, seven sixty-seven for invest. We're asking for sixty-nine thousand, eight sixty-three, and if that's sixty-nine thousand, eight sixty-three, we're asking fifty thousand of that be the money from the feds.
My question back to you is, how has it been paid for before?
I, well, the best I can come up with before is, they take it out of these federal grants. When they, when, when they go over the overtime, or they don't get the reimbursement, you go over this, instead of, instead of having an overage on your line item here, you go to the federal grant, you pay the overtime out of that.
It's gotta be.
We don't have that available.
It's had to be budgeted. It cannot be spent without being budgeted. Where was it budgeted before?
Greg, that number in ten fourteen, is that your number of organized employees? Because there's a thirty thousand dollar increase there.
That's not my number. That's the number that was given to it.
And that's a result of, because you changed some people around.
Would, right.
Right Dennis? And what did you change around?
We moved, any, task force officers are considered investigations or detectives. But the way I understood it, um, we worked with Gene and Jennifer, who I worked with, we didn't, we didn't add anybody to it. Anybody that we moved to invest, that we had to take somebody's name in, all we did was swap names. Would be a better way of saying.
Right, but there's, I mean, there's a thirty thousand dollar increase.
That's the number that came to us. I, I don't know where that's.
I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to track there.
Right.
Because apparently.
That had to be the difference in whoever was switched. Maybe it was a sergeant for a deputy, I don't know.
Right, and if it came out of rural patrol, I don't know how that happens, because that's a different level. Gene gave you, I mean, Gene and HR would give you this, she gave it to Jennifer. And those people are in those positions somewhere along the line, were already approved, not taking place. So there's an increase in there, that's something you're gonna have to take into consideration when we do the taxing.
Well, I don't think we're done yet, because.
No.
No.
If you, if you, if you look at uniform patrol, this has, uh, increased by a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty. If you look at investigations, that's reduced by a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. So there's gotta be another budget in here that's involved.
The bottom line is, is that these are expenditures that you shouldn't get all, uh.
Exactly.
Caught up in the, uh, the revenue source, until you sort that out. These are expenditures that they're, that they're asking about, but there, there is a question about the levy, because you're coming out, you're grabbing out of a different levy, and that's impacting the overall budget.
Well, and, and the fact is, is that also, I don't want, I don't think there's anybody at this table that wants to, to tax, uh, the taxpayer any more money than what we have to, if it's coming from some other source of federal funds, generally.
Right, and that's what.
And if, and it's also, uh, we have a situation here. If federal guns, grants are running out, that means that the local taxpayer is having to pick up the expenses for that particular program.
Or does the board want to continue that program? If the federal money runs out?
Absolutely.
And the answer could very possibly be no.
And we don't have, we're not, these grants were like, uh, Project Safe Neighborhood was gun involved. So we have gun-involved crimes, we know that there's no money there. We just pay overtime, and, because when you have, uh, an incident involving a firearm, it's gonna require an invest to work additional hours. Because you don't solve a crime from eight to four. It may, once they're outside of those eight hours that they're assigned, that's overtime. So as we used to be able to grab that overtime from Project Safe Neighborhood dollars, it's not there anymore, so it just comes out of our overtime.
But there's, there was, there's not like, you can, we can go in and say, okay, since we don't have Project Safe Neighborhood anymore, we can pet something out, since we lost that part, because it didn't really fund anything but taking the places some overtime.
Well, it, it.
Well, that's too bad.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. It is, and it's, and it's definitely gonna have an effect on, on, on this budget, because as the preliminary summary went from our, from Dennis Butler, we cannot go over that three dollar and fifty cent per thousand limit.
We reckon.
And, uh, your budget has the, has the biggest increase here of any other departments. And, and that's, I guess that's why we're spending so much time on it. And, uh, I, uh, I really, I don't wanna tax for, for, for dollars that, uh, in overtime or any other line item for that matter, that if we're gonna assume the responsibility of the federal government's programs that we've had for three, four, five years or longer, and, and, uh, there has to be some other way of doing this.
Your, for next fiscal year, they're saying they are gonna get fifty thousand, reimbursement for federal overtime that's in this line.
It's in this line item here.
When we start, either cut expenses or get new revenue. This is the new revenue side, so that fifty thousand, we will not tax for, too, we can't tax for, but we're gonna add a line item, there better be fifty thousand. The revenue that actually overtime for federal, or else then we are supplementing overtime.
Yes, yes, we are.
But when we add the line item, I'm gonna add fifty thousand on in revenue, which will offset this increase here.
My question goes back to, where has that revenue gone up to now?
Just a moment, hold on, we're having a discussion here.
But then it's been spent somewhere.
It's just gone on cash reserves. It's like the treasure with interest, he gets more interest, it goes in the pot, it doesn't go to their budget, it goes in the overall pot. Because this money wasn't budgeted, it's going in the overall pot, they found other line items to cover the thirty thousand dollar cost.
All right.
So they went over their budget.
But what you're saying then is, to increase their revenue and decrease the general basic revenue.
Well, all goes to general basic.
No, not what, not when you're talking about offsetting it in their budget.
We are decreasing budgeted revenues, we're increasing budgeted revenues by the fifty thousand. Before, it's just been going back into the overall pot. We're not being designated anything.
Same discussion could be had with federal prisoner money.
Yes, or the city reimbursement, any of that.
But that's all budgeted. This was never budgeted as a revenue coming in. Now we're saying let's budget as a revenue to offset the increase here, now that we know it's federal overtime.
Okay, okay, then I don't have a problem in doing it. I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna tax for something here that, uh, we're not sure that we're gonna have funds to cover.
Right.
I mean, if we are sure that the funds are gonna be here from the federal government.
They have been for eighteen years.
Then, and if they're gonna continue, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Uh, but it should be broken out as, uh, a, a swap out or a wash, if you will, and the taxpayer not being taxed for an additional thirty or forty thousand dollars under overtime.
Well, the ideal thing would be regular overtime, for God's sake, for our federal, have regular overtime, your federal overtime. But we're, this federal's gonna be a nightmare, even the minister, with all these different breakouts. But that'd be the way to do it.
Well.
We have federal overtime, we have a line item for federal overtime.
If we don't have to tax for it, then I'm for that, for that system. But, uh, I don't wanna have to tax for money that, uh, we're not gonna be sure that we're gonna get, and we're gonna assume, uh, the federal responsibility for.
Now that we know it's federal overtime, we're gonna add a line item, if they say it's fifty thousand revenue, to cover a fifty thousand overtime, it's a wash. Before it wasn't, this coming out of reserves or other line items, or they're going over budget.
So then can we cut this thirty-seven thousand bucks?
No. Because you're not gonna offset by the fifty thousand new revenue.
Okay.
It's gonna be budgeted now, not unbudgeted.
And we're gonna tax for it? That means we're gonna tax for it?
Nope, it's revenue.
Okay, it's a wash?
It's a mis-sense income coming in as a federal reimbursement for this overtime that we've never budgeted before.
So will that go under this budget here, under, uh, investigations?
Yes.
As a line item?
Investigation division is a revenue coming in, fifty thousand.
And that clears it for me.
Well, it doesn't clear it for me.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to have a conversation with you, Denny, after this.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, just to make you guys clear, once that overtime is used in the task force, they don't get anymore. They go home, or they, well, Pat, they can't work for free anymore, but that's how it used to be. When I was in the task force, and I was over my allotted money, every sheriff I worked for said, hey, we don't have any overtime for it, so, so hey, you just sucked it up and did work, well, now we have to go home. But, once we're out of that overtime, you know as a task force agent that you're gonna get X amount of dollars from the federal government. That is overseen by the DEA, local office, Omaha and St. Louis, and the marshals out of Cedar Rapids and Washington DC. X amount of dollars he gets for overtime, and it comes back to the county, and it goes into the general fund. Alls we've asked is for you to be able to put that there, so you can see that we're using overtime dollars for what it's for.
Right. And the only thing I, I would say is, that's a policy decision this board has to make. Because it's like anything else. If you've got revenue coming in, does it go into your department? Yes or no? And the answer has been no for almost everything that I can think of.
Right.
Conservation, we gave them the wood money.
But, and I get that, Larry, that's, but that's the only thing that makes it, um, not look positive when you go to look at the sheriff's overtime budget, because he's always in the hole. And what we're trying to show is make it more clear, say, this is, this is the dollars that we bring in, and this is why. So in other saying, we're, geez, you're fifty thousand dollars in the hole. Well, we weren't, it just went into the general fund. That's, that's all it is. We're just trying to maybe make that more, Pat, do you have anything, or?
No, I just, I just can't believe that for all those years, it was never budgeted.
I, I.
It was never budgeted.
But you didn't, with the federal grants, it didn't become an issue, because you could reach into a never pot.
It would come to, it would come to an issue, but be an issue at the end of the year.
Right.
Time to balance it out.
Yeah, I agree.
We have to do a budget amendment, and that's what was causing part of the problem, and this is a much better way.
I, thank you.
It should've been budgeted.
Well, I don't know if it's a much better way.
Works out, and if the OWI license thing works out, we need to get that separated.
Right.
Right.
I agree. I mean, I would be the first to tell you, I don't care if the money comes to the sheriff's office. He just said we would need a line item to show what part we're using, and obviously you can do whatever you want, I, that's fine.
Well, both those projects are based on they're going to generate money.
Right.
We don't account for that, how are we ever gonna know if it did?
Exactly. I'm with you a hundred percent.
So, uh, we should not, we should not this year go, I mean, for next fiscal year, go over this sixty-nine thousand dollars that's projected.
If that's what it's gonna be.
If that's what it's gonna be.
Because fifty thousand's gonna be reimbursed through new revenue that we've never budgeted before. So instead of decreasing expenses, you're increasing revenue, because this one federal money we never budgeted, it's in the pot.
All right, so this line item's okay.
Yes. But we need a, I think we have a couple explanations on that overtime line item, that fifty thousand's money's actually federally reimbursed.
I would like to have that in there.
So, you say the federal grants are wrong, we don't get reimbursed for grants, but yet we're getting federal money. Is that grant money or not?
No, 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 no. That's, if, if, if I'm the task force guy.
Yep.
They cover my overtime, because on a drug task force, if you're an undercover agent, you work, I mean, you're gonna put in sixty, seventy hours a week. They, they give a certain amount of money to pay for my overtime, and why I'm doing that. And, and it adds, for the three of them, it adds up to fifty thousand.
Okay, all right. So then we should add, we should add something here to show that.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta show the income coming in to offset that expenditure, which we haven't done in the past.
And that goes through county payroll, not a separate check from the feds.
No, county payroll.
County payroll, yep.
I think Jennifer submits it quarterly, and the auditor's office should get it. I'm pretty sure that's how.
Well, do you know what the setup amount is for next year?
It's, uh, for your two on the DEA, it's, uh, I believe seventeen thousand, five hundred, and your one on the marshal is fifteen thousand.
Okay, that's only thirty-two.
Fourteen, that's forty-nine.
There's two.
Seventy each.
Forty-nine something.
Oh, there's seventeen, five, two of those?
Yep.
And fifteen, okay. I got my shirt kinda comes with fifty thousand.
So we have this reworked, and then bring it back, and.
I would like, I'd like to have that done.
Before we receive it.
Definitely. Any other questions on this, on this page fifty? If not, we'll move on, we won't, we won't accept this, we'll have this one brought back to us. Pages, um, sixty-five and sixty-seven, which is correctional facilities, LEC.
Okay, to get these off the table real quick, here again, standby pay, field training to pay, instructional pay, that was in overtime, and you moved it out.
What line items are you talking about, Mark?
The, um.
Ten twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
That's all we're doing, the way we're acting, sergeants in the jail.
Well, hold it.
Contractual.
It's contractual, but we have, by going to two shifts, uh, twelve-hour days.
We have four sergeants now, two on each shift, to, so that there's a sergeant there, when a sergeant's gone, unless one sergeant's scheduled off, and another one takes comp vacation, whatever, then we will have to pay acting supervisor pay.
Okay?
So that's why your line item ten sixteen is up, supervisory?
Ten sixteen.
Yeah, supervisor organized, is that what we've negotiated with, uh, with, with organized employees?
Well, that, that'd be a wage, less than two percent.
Then, oh, okay, all right, and that has that.
Wages.
And that's computed by the auditor.
Yep.
Could ask about ten nineteen.
What about ten nineteen, the overtime?
I know you said that was up. I mean, you've talked about it.
Look at your actual right now.
But I, I'm looking at it, it's rather alarming, based on the, the numbers before. I mean, we've been warned, and you've been in talking about it, so it's, it's not a complete surprise. It's still, it's just so high. I, I just think it.
I can't run a jail with six officers on the floor, I can't do it.
How did it run before?
Very poorly.
Very poorly.
It's probably why we had some of the situations we had, and we're trying to stop those from reoccurring.
The problem is, there's only so much money. Something has to be cut, because we can't pay it.
Yeah, where is that money gonna come from? I don't, have you got it in your back pocket?
I don't know, that's, that's where the rubber meets the road for you people.
No, no, no.
It's not a worry, you're, it's probably a worry too, Dave.
You have a budget.
No, I agree. I'm proposing, this is where we're at. And the hard things are, you're gonna have to decide which is the priority. I'm, I'm saying this, six people in the jail with a hundred and eighty to two hundred-plus inmates, two of them locked up, is not enough. That's why we increase the staff. I have, I think I've been more than vocal about that. And there's nothing we can do now. We went to, we're going to the twelve-hour shifts, two twelve-hour shifts, that's gonna increase the number of people working, but it's also gonna increase, uh.
It's gonna increase your man-hours.
Man-hours.
There's a cost, there's a cost, we told you that.
I, I understand that, and you did tell us that. But you can't spend money you don't have, and that's what's happened. And that's what's happened. So I don't know what you're going to do.
In overtime and things that occur like this, that's a necessity. So, I, it's, it's my opinion, you'll have to pay it. I don't know what else to tell you. Yeah, you, you can cut me somewhere else.
But we're not jeopardizing.
But you can't jeopardize the security and the people that are in the facility. That's the bottom line.
Well, we don't think that we have a.
If I agree with everything you've said.
Right.
The money is still not there.
Okay.
So what do you propose to do to survive until June 30th? Are you going to shut the jail down?
You, you really have proposed a question that's impossible. Because that would cost you more money, Larry. Because then you're going to ship them out. So, that's the situation the county has gotten themselves into. Dave Drew didn't get this county into this situation.
Didn't get the board to supervise it.
Somewhere along the line, then you can blame all the bad people in society filling the jail. I don't know. But it has to have adequate security. And it costs money to have the security of the facility. That's where the difficult decision comes. Don't throw it to Dave Drew. That's where the priority of the board has to come on spending, in my opinion.
Well.
You may not like that, but that's what it is.
But you know what, that brings up another topic of discussion, Dave, and that is, and I think we'll probably get into that later, we need to probably talk about Prairie Hills and the numbers of people that you have out there, because those numbers are not high with the minimum security people. And you do have staff out there that, that has to monitor and supervise those folks. We may have to look at, we may have to look at closing that down, bringing these folks back to the LEC, because we do have cells that are available. And, and, and that will save us some money. Because we're spending somewhere in the neighborhood of 143, 150,000 dollars annually with the expenses out there. Because, as I said earlier, we cannot go over that $3.50 level. And, and that's what we're.
That's not going to change your overtime in downtown jail.
It may not, it may not. But we're going to save some money by shutting that facility down if we have to. Well, 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 I, I disagree with.
Where's CBM going to prepare their food?
Well, well, we can move.
Gentlemen, seriously, this is where the issue comes. You guys called and asked for some numbers.
I, I called. Do you have them by chance?
Yes.
I never do.
They were sent to you.
On email?
Yeah. We emailed Jackie some numbers, some have inquired, Larry has inquired in the past. No one has contacted the sheriff to ask, you know, you can look at dollars, but you need explanations beside the dollars. And the explanation is, if you close Prairie Hill, you'll never get that variance back. Okay? Number two, when you bring those 27, 28, now we're at capacity. So if the summer flow goes again, now we're farming them out to different places. That's costing us to send our inmates to other places. We have put some dollars to that. Closing it would be extremely costly. Because now I'm transporting deputies or transport officers to different county jails. I'm no longer getting my meals prepared at a reduced rate. I contacted CBM when I first heard grumbling that this might happen. They told me that you can figure the cost would go up four times. That the facility here is not adequate to prepare the meals. Now, unless you want to pay more money to fix it for whatever they need, but they just said it wasn't. Because they looked into it to try to do a business here at one time, I believe. They were one of the people looking at it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
There's got to be a lot more discussion with the sheriff than what we've got time allowed. And I don't know that it's, part of this is a budget discussion. So, I'd kind of like to reschedule the sheriff and move on. We've got all these people sitting out there.
Okay, we can.
Will there be a better day or what's?
Well, we may have to have a.
It was downhill.
There's still any better days. But I think that we probably going to have to have, you know, schedule some, some additional days for this budget review, particularly on this particular budget. You're right. I think we have to move forward on this at this point in time. And we've gotten to, you know, the correctional facilities, LEC, and I, I think that if there's any questions that, that I have or any of the other board members have about this budget, we can direct them to you before we reschedule back on here, Dave. Because I think that we're going to run through questions like this all the way through this budget. And there's got to be, there's got to be some better answers. You know, in here you have, well, I won't, I won't go into that, because let's, let's, stop here with your budget and, and then we'll, we'll schedule you for a different, for another day, maybe next week, or maybe even this week.
I have a couple of things. Number one, I don't think any of this should be done without the full board.
Oh, no.
See, this is a two-on-two or something. It's got to be done by the full board.
No, we're not, we're not talking about that at all.
Well, there are some things, Larry said there are some things that aren't necessarily budget items. I think they're all budget items.
They are.
Well, it's, it's for the full board.
Yeah. That's why I brought up.
Second thing, you made up a list of things. I'd like a copy of that.
We will, you will have a copy before the end of the day. All of you.
The other piece was figures on Prairie Hills. I'd like that.
I am not getting my county emails, I apologize. I need to have IT look at my. Okay, good. Because I was going to ask you to.
But based on what we've been presented here, we've got to look at other alternatives. Because I think Larry is right, we, we do not have the money to, to new dollars to, to funding all of the requests that you have here. And so there's going to have to be, you know, some, some policy change in, in our operations.
Mr. Chairman, I will say just a little bit on Prairie Hills. I was a very new supervisor when I was placed on the committee to look at Prairie Hills during another very tough budget season. And I do know that we looked at it, but I thought the task force was a, was a good idea to look at.
Correct.
But the question last time was, is it a good facility? I'm wondering if the question means, how do we close it? How do we make it successful? I mean, it may be a different question this time around based on, on these numbers, which will frame what data is collected.
Right, you know, I mean, you close it, that's, that's up to you. That's part of the tough decisions.
It is, so, but I would like to do it with a lot of input and looking at it, but I know last time it.
And I know that we'll lose the opportunity to reopen that in the future if we should need that facility again. Because, as you know, we had an overcrowding problem a number of years ago where we had a waiting list of prisoners out there that we had to schedule into the jail. And that's why we opened that facility out there to start with. We had public hearings all across this county to get that done.
And we just go back to that.
So, that's why we were asking for, you know, that, you know, for scrutinizing this budget so much.
I get it.
Because there's, there's, there's a, there's a huge request here, Dave. We, we can't do it with existing dollars.
And there will be tough decisions, and some of them are not going to be popular and, and we're not going to, none of us will like what we have to do. Because not being able to provide the service that we all want to provide is not very fun. But it's not, you know, there's wants and there's needs, so we're going to have to really look at the needs.
We can't not do it with the existing dollars. Okay, let's move on.
You get your agenda though, don't you?
Oh, right now it's, it's seven to 10, and you've got electronic monitoring, they're just in and out.
Electronic monitoring doesn't need, doesn't need that facility. Okay, let's go on to Phoenix program, and that's under general supplement. And that's a hundred different tab here, guys. I'll give you time to get through it.
Their request is actually less than 0%. Actually, we have a little bit. They're going from 131,312 current to 130,903.
See that, yeah. Kind of give us a little review on what's happening there, please. Identify yourselves, please, with the record and.
I'm Cliff Malard, Vice President, Jackson Recovery Centers.
Amy Black, Vice President.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The budget that you see before you is, is based on mirroring the staffing and the program that we have in place this year. That is, it provides for staffing and therapy services at the Prairie Hills facility and also for patients who continue the program once they're discharged with our outpatient program at no cost to the participants. We've requested 130,903 dollars this year to maintain the program as it is. And we've, we have encountered some increases in staffing costs, some increases in salaries. We've attempted to balance our request by reducing how much administrative overhead we apply to this particular thing and trying to make it as respectful, the cost constraints possible.
How many people went through program last year?
Thirty-four went through last year. Of them, 73% of them completed the in-jail portion of the program and were admitted into our outpatient program. And of those, 50% successfully completed the program. I can tell you that over 80% of them were employed at the time of discharge and none of them had reoffended of those successful individuals who completed the program.
That's great. That's the purpose of that program.
It's continued to have good outcomes and we continue to work certainly to increase our numbers and working closely with the sheriff's department, who's been our partner in that. And continue to hope that it's a, I think it's a very valuable and we have good data and outcomes that demonstrate its effectiveness and how it helps our community.
Yep. Any other concerns?
Not more than, but.
Yeah, I know, yeah, but.
Out of those 34, are those people actually residing in the jail or are these people out of the jail going through your program?
They're in Prairie Hills. They go to Prairie Hills for the in-jail portion for about 60 days. And then from there, when they're released, they come to our outpatient program.
Now, are they part of your numbers where you say there's so many out of Prairie Hill, like six, seven, eight, nine? Those numbers are embedded in those numbers, right? Do you perform services out of Prairie Hills or do they actually go to your facility out of Jackson Recovery?
We have therapists who house there. We take space at Prairie Hills.
Off space?
In an office.
One office?
Yes.
Okay. Well, why not?
I move to receive.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Conservation, that's under general basic.
What page is George?
Page is 106, 108.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I complimented you earlier, something I do not do very often.
I heard something about conservation, I didn't know if it was good or bad, so.
Your budget is easy to read, let's put it that way.
Try to do what we're asked to do, so. And, basically, we, we moved some line items around. Our operations portion stayed at 0% increase. So we are at same level as we are this current year. The reason you'll see a few line items moved around, you know, under administration, the first one under tax allotment, that's our drainage assessment fees we have to pay at a Weagle wetland. Can't get out of that. They found some lateral, they didn't realize that they hadn't been charging for, and they had to clean it out last year. Wham, all of a sudden those assessments almost doubled. So, that's going to be at 5,900 now for the foreseeable future instead of 3,700, or, yeah, 37. The other thing is, we're, we're always dealing with increases in our electrical costs and stuff at the parks, so I tried to put a little more money in there. Now, obviously, it's coming from somewhere else, so. As it shifted, some went up, some went down. That's about the, the story of it. We did keep the 5,500 in for training another law enforcement officer. We were anticipating another retirement this fall, and that person would get trained next winter. Our other one just started yesterday at the Law Enforcement Academy.
Okay.
I move to receive this budget, I didn't.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those pose same sign. Okay, 109, 110, that's the parks budget. Yes?
On 1117, the guy who's actually going down, there is a move next year?
Probably because the guy that retired was probably getting more contribution.
Usually don't see that number, but.
Yeah, I do think so. That's my one.
Okay, 109, 110, that is parks budget.
Move to receive that one too.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question on employee hospitalization. Do you get somebody that's, a family coverage? Were you had a single?
Uh, by fact, there's one of our people married to a deputy, and she's always carried the family health insurance over there. She's anticipating retirement, so in preparation for that move, they're flipping the insurance over to our department.
The amount is about 15,000, pretty much.
Okay, any further discussion?
One other, and that's, that's light in here is bad news. Forty, School of Instruction, they didn't have anything in there for the last few years, not yet.
That's that law enforcement position for training.
Oh, alright, that's the academy.
Right, yep. 5,500 this year, the guy's in, 5,500 will be the guy for next year, yeah.
Any other questions, Larry?
Nope, that's the only ones I had.
Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Next one is our naturalist.
Our naturalist position, 111, 112. Is there a motion to receive this budget?
Move it.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those both same sign.
And that last one is our nature center area out there with managing maintaining that facility.
Move on.
Second.
There's a second, yeah, there's a second. Discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Rest of our budgets are non-tax supported budgets. We operate off of our revenues. Might be our programs budget out there or some of our 360 CIPs and our other types of things.
Move on to 257, 266, and 667.
Right. Dennis?
One thing on here, we go through the CIP, he usually funds it through revenues, he does pay back on debt service payment. But one thing I did add in our CIP for next year is a new loan going in the nature center. Because that's something you can't, you know, pay over year after year, so I did do in our CIP loan next year that's going to approve. But with the state convention coming out there, the road will be back, it needs repairs. I just took it out as a loan to get it done.
Okay. Any further discussion?
By the way, secondary roads people have done a lot of the preliminary design work on that. And I just talked to Mark this morning, he said they're willing to finish that up for us and.
Good. It's good collaboration.
I'll have to go to bid this spring, so.
Good collaboration, it really is.
Yeah, that's great.
Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Those opposed, same sign. Conservation reserve, that's on sixteen and thirty. Did that include, oh, you included that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, all right. Good. I guess that's all we have for you.
I point out, I have Chris Zelmer's aunt here. She's our new chairman this year of our board.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good leadership, yeah.
And you're aware that I'll have an opening on my board?
Yes, I am. We got a letter from, resignation from Greg.
Talked about how you expect, plan to proceed to fill that at all, or...
No, we have not. We have not had any preliminary discussion, but we could...
He did have a recommendation in there, and it looked fine to me, so.
He did? Yeah.
It's up to you, folks. I just, as soon as we can get someone in there, I appreciate it, and any questions, give me a holler.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
All right, good, thank you.
Does she need to fill out an application?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, maybe have her do that, Rick. Fill out an application.
The item, item D is General Basic, and that is the communication center. Glenn, are you here for that? It's under General Basic.
What page?
One forty-six.
That's page one fourteen, I believe it is.
I don't have mine on page one.
One forty-six.
I got it, thanks.
What we've done here is plugged in a number, the city gave me, because it's a joint city, county.
Yeah, I got that.
And it's not a set number. It could be raised, it could be cut. So, it's a number that they gave me, so I could get a number in there to start with.
Glenn, could you give us the explanation on it?
We like this number much better.
Move to receive, unless Glenn can get the number down. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Right. Okay, all right, yeah. We'll see you tomorrow morning then. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. County Fair, page one fourteen. Is that on the General Basic? Yes. Hello, gentlemen.
Good morning.
How are you?
Ron Ollie, President of the Track Board. We're holding line, I guess, and requesting the same amount that we did last year, with the exception of the agreement that we made with Martinera on the, doing the dirt work, and he said that we needed to add, excuse me, a line item of three thousand dollars to cover that dirt work for, in the track area, which we did, so it would make actually our total request for twenty-six thousand, six twenty-eight, which would be just three thousand above what we requested last year.
Couple things. One, they do show a profit the last two or four years. They did this year, they did a major renovation of a hundred and fifty thousand out there, but they usually have twenty, twenty-five thousand net profit. We've asked everybody to come in zero. Secondly, consecutive, we'll pay this hot learn budget instead of all the General Basic.
I don't think so.
Okay, is that a choice, either give them extra three thousand, or tell them to pay our revenues?
Well, that is one choice, but we also could ask them to submit a, an application for a grant from Riverboat, you know, for three thousand dollars, too. That's what I'd rather have you do, to pay for this additional...
The grading?
The grading, absolutely.
Yeah, because I think if we don't use secondary roads, that price is gonna go up. If you have to rent equipment and people...
Oh, it will. I mean, if we hire somebody outside secondary roads.
Right.
But I think that if you gentlemen could offer us an application for, for a grant from Riverboat for, you know, to do the road improvement out there, and we could take it off this twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight, I think, if we could do that. Yes?
Because our Riverboat's gonna be pretty well heated, potentially this is economic valid to keep the fair, improve the key conditions out there, could be our local option also.
Okay.
That's in for most...
That would be better.
That'd be better than Riverboat.
That would be better.
All right, so are we saying to increase the budget to the twenty-six thousand dollar figure, and then fund part of it out of lost funds, or are you saying to leave it as it is?
It is saying, the whole budget is an obligation. The board says, let's pay down a local option, we'll just stop...
Local option, rural, yeah. You don't really care how you get it.
Well...
Basically, it's a...
I just, you know, I want to understand that, you know, how we're gonna arrive at it, I guess.
This is gonna be a one-time expense.
Make that accomplished, or have that accomplished, you know, I mean, is it...
Call him.
Is this one time, or is this every year?
Every year, we have that expense. I mean, and in the past...
If something happens, strong local option.
Move to receive.
Second.
No, it's twenty-three. It's only twenty-three in our...
And then we'll get you the money.
Riverboat's a non-tax fund, so we wouldn't have to tax for that. So, we're looking at a different pot of money, basically. Still giving it to you, but a different...
We'll get it from somewhere.
Yeah, you will. Nor the lost funds, that's the one's in sales tax. That's not, that's not what we levy.
Okay.
Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
All right, fellas, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Veterans Affairs?
Just can't stand up.
Comes out of General Basic, and those pages are one five ninety-six.
Push it up here, just for... Hi, Daniel.
Hello.
Oh, this is almost impossible to see, and that's why.
I can't hardly see it. Might get a magnifying glass.
That's what I'm gonna have to do.
Okay. Danielle, you wanna kinda go through your...
Sure.
Your budget here on page ninety-five, and the board'll kinda chime in.
Actually, this is pretty simple. The only increases are in wages.
Yeah.
Well, I've got some questions on the building itself.
Sure. And it's probably the same thing we've talked about before, so I have no problem with addressing it.
You don't have any problem with us dropping it?
Addressing it.
Oh.
Selective hearing.
Sometimes my hearing works.
Hearing eyes.
Are you paying a share of the electric power now?
The power, yes. We've been paying our power and water the whole time we've been there.
Okay, and...
We've been paying for the power and water the whole time we've been in there.
The whole unit, or just...
No, our portion. Yeah, just our portion.
All right. Building repair and maintenance. You've never spent any money there that I can see.
We, what we did with that money so far is we had to replace one of our front entrances with that money for that. And then we also put some carpet down to help with, we had some people slipping, and it also helped with the privacy dampening the sound somewhat. And so, we used the building monies for that. That money, I have earmarked for anything that's later, like if we would have to replace the other entrance, or plumbing, or a broken window, or anything like that.
We just haven't spent any, Danielle. I don't know where you spent it at.
That's all I've had to do.
Are you looking at sixty-one oh five, Larry, or what?
I'm looking at forty...
Forty-four ten. We haven't spent any since fiscal year thirteen, five oh two.
But there's also a buildings. Is that where you coded your, what you just talked about?
The buildings is where we have our cleaning and cleaning supplies. So, that's everyday stuff, and the other one, and I don't know why originally there were two buildings, but that's how I have them separated.
That really should be another line item. Buildings is permanent improvements, not maintenance.
Well, see, and that's what I was trying to figure that out.
Should I pay out of them?
That should be with it?
And maintenance. Is it a contract that we'll get through this?
Yes, we use...
Isn't that what the jail uses, is that what everybody else uses as that line item? No, they have their contractual services line item. They don't have that here.
So, maybe the building should be contractual services?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can, I can add a line item and move that number up there.
And so, that money's being spent on building maintenance, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Contractual.
Contractual, right.
But back to building repairs that Larry's talking about, was there anything to get done this year to be able to reduce the budget for next year? We've got to find some money somewhere.
Well, I think we should zero that budget out, because we do all the maintenance and repair out there, or mental health does.
Well, the things that I mentioned, we paid for. I'll do it however you want me to do it.
Right, but see, it's, there's no money spent out of there, Danielle. And I just, I just don't think it needs to be there.
We've only used it for emergency. Well, the carpet wasn't an emergency, but it helped to prevent falls and stuff. But I'll do it however you guys want to do it.
So, what you're saying is, we'll just zero this out, and then it'll maybe come into Patty's budget?
Well, either that or Mark's budget.
Oh, okay.
But the way that this is now, if, let's say the toilet started leaking all over the office, I could call a plumber and say, come fix it today. If that's gone, then if I understand it right, then I have to put in a work order and tell building maintenance to have somebody come fix this.
Right.
And I'm, that's fine.
Okay, that works for us.
It's just that I, it puts another step in it, so.
Yeah, well, better the step than the thirty-five-hundred.
Or you guys want to do it.
Okay.
What does the board want to do?
I'd say cut that by thirty-five-hundred, and building maintenance takes care of everything out there.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
I can ask a question on this. Are we gonna receive an increase in building maintenance by thirty-five-hundred, or are we just gonna find that somewhere else?
No, you will not, because that's everyday maintenance that they should be able to work into their...
That's what you were saying, but I wanted to ask you.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye, so we're taking thirty-five-hundred out of there.
Aye. All right.
And I'll change that line to contractual services. Be in the right one.
Will that be still sixty-one oh five, or what?
It'll be forty-four seventy-eight.
Forty-four seventy-eight.
Is there a motion to receive this budget as amended?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And now, we have the page ninety-four, the IDVA grant. What's the status of that?
That grant has to be, well, they call it an allocation. It has to be approved every year by the state, and so far, it has not been passed. But whenever they take action on it, they do contact both myself and the auditor's office, so when it passes, we'll know it passes, if it passes.
And we did put the numbers, the revenue, we had expenditures in. If it doesn't pass, throw them in.
Okay, so should we have a motion to receive this?
Motion to receive.
I have, I've got a question. Office equipment and furniture. You don't spend any money, Danielle. Thank you very much, but you don't.
I try very hard not to spend anything I don't have to spend. When we very first moved into the building, we obviously had to get new furniture and those things, and I think that's why that line item was there. Last year, they added the cell phone expense because I use an external modem to do outreach, and I use cell phone expense for that. But the other things that we bought varies from year to year, so no, it isn't furniture, but that's the line item I have to use, so that's what I've been using.
And that all comes out of the grant?
All of it, yeah.
It's just a grant.
Yep.
We're not taxing for that.
What, you're getting, you're gonna...
Yeah, we are.
For ten thousand?
Yeah, we are.
Warner, you haven't spent anything so far this year.
We haven't.
What if you don't spend the ten thousand? Where's the money go?
It has to go back to the state. Whatever I spend has to go back, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Use it early.
Just then go in the pot.
Right.
That's all state money? That's no local match?
No, no. State only, yep. And I, and I've spent it every year. I've got it. I do wait in case there's a bigger thing that we need, so then, you know, I don't want to spend it too early, and then we, we spend it all, or we don't keep it.
In two thousand thirteen, you want to spend two thousand ninety-two. Do we have to return eight thousand dollars?
We spent the whole thing.
Doesn't reflect the here.
And I had to turn in a report to the state.
It's just not being expended properly. Right, it's being expended, different code in here.
But you have to turn in a report to the state, so they know that the money's been spent.
To tell them exactly what I spent it on, and, yep.
Okay, yes, we have to keep our records.
Yeah, because we have rules about what we can and can't use it for, and...
So, is the county already correct, thirteen numbers? We find out where the expensive reaction is?
Yeah, I think we should, because there's eight thousand dollars. I'm looking back at our other budget, and I don't see eight thousand dollars there. I don't see eight thousand.
Can you not question her?
No, but she's...
The state.
But she's, yeah, she's got the records.
Also, last year, five of it went to wages for Lisa, too.
That'd have been caught by the auditor.
Also went to wages.
Five of it.
Five thousand of it.
Okay, any other questions on this budget?
Move to receive, with the exceptions to be placed in the line items.
Second.
Question clarification. If you were to spend the five thousand in salary at the
end of this year, since you're not sure you're gonna need to spend the whole on furniture or whatever, could you thus reduce the line item in salary here, or reduce your tax asking by five thousand dollars?
That's a question that Danielle has to answer, because, I mean, she's doing outreach and some other things.
I would suspect you can't supplant the grant.
No, I can't, can't supplant that grant.
Anything I don't spend has to go back.
Most of those grants, you can't do that. Larry?
That motion was on the grant, not the, not the assistance.
That was the grant.
The grant.
Assistance is next.
Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the next one's page ninety-eight, which is the assistance.
I didn't, I kept the total the same. The only change I made was the cash allowances assistance. Ever since I've worked for the county, we've never used cash allowances assistance. I don't know how I would get someone cash, so I propose we don't even have it.
Yeah, I don't know either how you'd get them cash.
So, I took the two thousand out and moved it to other light items that I thought were appropriate.
Questions, concerns?
Move to receive.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion. We've got some big numbers in here. We just don't seem to be spending.
We aren't spending it. We aren't having the requests that we've had in the past.
So, shouldn't we reduce that for tax asking?
I guess that's up to you guys. I feel like the thing about the assistance is you never know how many requests you're gonna get. Could we cut it, and then if I need more, you could figure out where to get it? That's, I guess, what the option would be. We haven't had to come back and ask for more since two thousand three.
We're on a patient thirty-six thousand, same as you spent the previous year. So, if you gave her fifty thousand, that's fourteen thousand more. But the stipulation, if she has a bunch to come in, she'll be back asking for one, out of reserves.
So, what are you trying to say? Just do the total and not do the line items?
She's got twenty-three thousand, down to fifty, that her back to line items.